Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough regular meeting, tonight, October 2nd, 2017. We apologize for being a few minutes late. We had the formal dedication of the Stephen C. Massey Music Suite leading up to tonight's school committee meeting, and it took us just a few extra minutes, which were great minutes. And Mr. Massey's legacy's been commented on a number of times, and we finally recognized him tonight and had him here for the official dedication of his music wing. Tonight, we are going to recognize visitors, as we always do. Any visitors that want to be heard? We are going to take up minutes, and then we'll have our teaching and learning highlight, which will feature the Guidance Department highlights of the Summer College Tour with Mr. O'Neal, Ms. White, and a number of students. Ms. Spinelli and Dr. Bertos will then take us through our 2017 Culture and Climate Survey results, which is something we do every year to understand how we're doing as a school district, one of our many assessments, informal assessments. We're then going to turn our attention to our three-year technology plan and a status update with Mr. Hire. We have been working for the last several meetings on some policy updates, and tonight we're going to look at one specific policy regarding naming facilities. We'll take up other matters after that. And then the committee will be entering executive session once again for the purpose of discussing wage and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically our new superintendent. And that's a great discussion that's ongoing. The committee will not return to open session tonight, so no one will have to stay and wait for us. So I mentioned what a positive experience we had with Mr. Massey's dedication, and you know, one of the true life lessons that we learn in school for our students here tonight, and really for all of us, is that life has its ups and downs, and we have to learn how to take all of that in stride, and with gratitude, and with patience, and with understanding. And it's been a tough week here in Foxborough, as a lot of us know. And so, we want to take just a moment of silence, and I'll invite the superintendent to just mention a few names we want to remember tonight in our moment of silence.
So, it has been a tough week, as we all know. The two words that come to mind about the passing of our beloved six-year-old kindergarten student, Anthony Skasha, is really unthinkable and unimaginable. And I think that we're still trying to wrap our minds around it, and I haven't really been able to get past unthinkable and unimaginable yet. I don't think we always know, or figure out why these things happen, but he was, you know, a sweet boy who we had had in preschool for a couple of years, so he was well-known to the Borough School staff. He had not just arrived at the Borough School, and he'd been making really great progress, and I know so many people loved him, and were proud of him, and that includes his family and school staff. So that, the unimaginable, unbearable loss of Anthony's been very difficult. In addition to that, we've had, experienced a loss within a week of Anthony of two devoted dads of Foxborough students, Eric Dahl and Tim Head, most recently. And they both have children in the school system, and they were unexpected deaths at a fairly young age as well. So, I think it's been, you know, a reminder that life really is precious, and, you know, any problem can be solved, so I think this is a good lesson for us, that, you know, any problem can be solved unless somebody dies. And when somebody dies, it's something that we all try to learn from, and heal, and be together. And I think this week, the Foxborough community is certainly learning the value of coming together for that. But we certainly remember all three of them, particularly our little boy Anthony, and I think a long moment of silence would be wonderful. Thank you.
I want to thank the superintendent for sharing that personal moment. It's not an easy thing, obviously, to express quite the right words or emotions at a time like this, but I like to be an optimist and positive, and say that these are times when it's nice to be in Foxborough, that the community rallies around itself, around its members. These are people, Anthony and Eric and Tim, who will never be forgotten, just like Sam Burns, Joe Heinricher, and so many others before them are never forgotten. But they make us understanding, they help us to learn about how to handle life, and we'll always remember them. So, thank you for taking us to that. Okay. Are there any visitors who wish to be heard from tonight? Seeing none, we'll take up minutes. These are the September 18th regular meeting minutes to begin with. I know Mr. Connolly was absent under the weather. I'm glad you're back with us. Hope you're off to a good school year. We missed you at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Hope you get better.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. I didn't see any comments from my end on the regular meeting minutes. Anybody else?
I just have one typo, I'm sorry. It, the fourth, I know, the fourth page, the third paragraph down, the, one, two, three, the fifth line, it should be result, not results. It's, that's it. Can result in credits that reduce insurance costs.
That's good.
That's four, where, how, oh, yep.
Oh, can result, yeah.
Yep, that's it. That's all I have. Everything else looks great.
Anybody else? Motion to approve as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Thank you, Marilyn. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And Mr. Connolly will abstain, so 4-0-1. Thank you. And after last meeting, we also had an executive session, as I mentioned earlier. This is the executive session minutes from September 18th, 2017. Personally, I didn't see any question or comment with the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes as presented.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? 4-0-1. And would anybody like to motion to release the executive session minutes?
I'll make that motion that we release the executive session minutes of September 18th, 2017.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0. Thank you. Okay. Teaching and learning highlight, our great Guidance Department highlights of the Summer College Tour. Ms. Spinelli?
This is our happiest point of the meeting, so I'd like to invite Ms. Lorraine White, Mr. Joe O'Neal, and especially our three fabulous students.
Wonderful.
So, we have Joe Freitas, Phil DeRay, and Delia Loquette. Come on up. Happy to have you here. This is always our favorite part of the meeting, when we get to hear from kids. So, the context of this, as the committee knows, that much more has been going on in the summer to help our incoming seniors who are applying for colleges, or including me, anyone who's looking to get more information about colleges. And Joe, we talk about you a lot, Ms. O'Neal, at this table. We mention Mr. O'Neal a lot, but we don't-
Is that good or bad?
No, it's wonderful. It's always wonderful, and the services you bring to our kids, but we don't always have the luxury of having you here, so-
Delighted to be here.
Especially welcome to you. Lorraine is a frequent flyer guest, because there's all things Guidance going on-
Right.
Several times throughout the year, but it's wonderful. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for having us, and I'm delighted to be here with Lorraine, and with these three wonderful seniors. Can you believe they're seniors? Those were beautiful sentiments, too. Very, very well, very well said. We decided, oh, first I should introduce the three. Well, why don't you speak?
I'm Joe Freitas. I'm a senior now, as he said earlier. I play baseball.
And look at Delia, she's dressed for action.
Love it.
She just came home from a volleyball game.
How'd you do?
Uh, we lost.
Aw, sorry.
I'm Delia Loquette. I'm also a senior. I play volleyball.
I'm Phil DeRay. I came from football practice. I also do wrestling.
And these are just some of the things that these fantastic young seniors do. Back a while ago, Lorraine and I had talked about the idea of maybe taking some college trips, realizing that sometimes it's very difficult for families to go, and actually, each one will probably share a little bit about why they came along. You know, we realize sometimes it's tough for families to get going and to take a trip, and so we thought that, and sometimes the seniors or juniors, if we, you know, do some of this next semester, they like to travel together, you know, in '15, and go see a college together, and actually, Lorraine and I had the luxury of two young undergrads come up to them, take them off, and Lorraine and I say, "Okay, what do we do now?" But it's wonderful, because it's, you know, it's like, you know, college students who are maybe 19, or second-year students, third-year students, taking juniors and seniors around and describing to them. So, we start, we just threw out the idea of starting to have trips. And our first trip was to UMass at Amherst and to Western New England University. And we tried to place two colleges fairly close together, so we can go to one, then take a short trip and go to the other, and then get back. You know, basically leaving at 8:00 a.m. and getting home by 4:00 o'clock or so. And sometimes it's nice to have a large one and a smaller one, just for contrast, for the kids to see the difference between two different kinds of universities, so. So, these wonderful seniors, plus another 10 or so, were willing to come on our maiden voyage, and we had a very, very good, good voyage. I'll let them take it from there.
Well, we went to UMass Amherst first, was in my favor. I really like UMass. I was great to go see it, which, because I've never, my brother went there, but I've been there before to visit him, but I've never, like, went on a tour. So, it was good to see, like, more of UMass. But we also went to Western New England, which was like a smaller campus, so I got to see a big campus versus a smaller campus, which was good to, to just, like, see, because I like the bigger campus, so it was a good, it's just good to know when I'm applying to other colleges.
When I went to UMass Amherst, I thought, honestly, I thought I wanted to go there, but then, when I went there, it was totally different. I realized I didn't want to go there at all. Also, Western New England was different for me. I didn't want to go there either. But I feel like if the students were there, it probably would have had a different effect on me, but like, since the students were not there, like, I just didn't like that. I didn't feel the vibe or anything like that, so I passed up on those schools, but, yeah.
Personally, in my opinion, I'd like to go to both.
Same time, Phil?
I wish, I wish, if it were possible. I like the small feel of Western New England. I thought it was a cool, close-knit community, but the only thing about it is, since, like, we come from Foxborough, it's kind of small, I'd like to change it up a little bit and go to something big, like UMass Amherst, where there's, like, around 20,000 people. And I just thought it would be better to, like, meet someone new every day, or like, have a new experience every day, other than just the same routine daily. It'd be nice to switch it up.
So, Phil, did it change, this is Phil, by the way, did it change your mind? You know, small versus large?
Yeah, it changed my mind. Like, I think I'm looking more towards the large colleges now, instead of small. It'd just be better for me, I feel like, be more interesting.
Yeah. And that's, you know, we tell the students, that's the advantage of visiting, because, you know, you might have one concept in your head, but then you go visit a place, and all of a sudden, hmm, that's not exactly what I was thinking that I wanted, or that's, I didn't realize I wanted this, so. So, that was a little bit of change of mind.
That's great. Yeah, I could have, now, as I said, what's good about it, too, I think, is, like, you can either rule it in or rule it out, and that's what's so good. So, I think the value of going on these, it's not because you maybe want to apply to that school, but just to see what, yeah, campuses similar to that look like, so. And Delia had another really good point, too, about when students are in session. It's great to see, we always say, if you can get to them when they're in session, but as you know, missing school is hard, too, so it's really difficult to find a time when they're in session and our students wouldn't be missing class time. So, that, that's one of our-
And Delia was on her own at a trip to, tell them about that, when the girl came up to you.
I went to Providence recently, on Thursday, yeah, it was Thursday morning, and then I met with admissions. I also had a tour with the seniors that went there, and they were all pretty nice. Everyone I met, they said hi to me and my mother. They basically, like, asked how our day was going, and then there was one student who came up to me and was like, "Come here, like, this school's like, like, this is like a really good school. I love it." And like, my cousin, she goes there, she loves it, so I fell in love with it, because the students there are, like, they're so friendly, and it's like a whole family. It's like, you don't, it's like Foxborough, it's twice the size of Foxborough, you know people, but then you don't know everybody. So, like, you still meet new people, but like, it's also, like, you know people still. That makes sense.
No, that's, and it's nice to have a student approach you like that, out of the blue, and just start to talk to you, you know, talk with you, yeah. The food.
Always important.
UMass Amherst.
Always important.
UMass Amherst.
He knew it all along.
Yeah, it's really good.
I was blown away by that, by the way. We walk in, the whole group of us, and they had set us up so we could go past the register and all that type of thing, and I don't even know how to describe it, but one of probably four food centers in the, on the campus, huge round place where the students can walk around and pick from Chinese, or Italian, or American, and, you know, it's fantastic. I heard a couple of them mumble, "I could stay here all afternoon."
I think there's a term for that in freshman year, but I can't quite remember what it is.
Yeah, the food service has probably changed since you and I were in college. But I think the points you kids are making are exactly right, is that you do get a vibe or not, and sometimes you get a vibe where you weren't expecting it, and sometimes you don't get a vibe where you were expecting it. And I think that idea of going, and, because that happened to one of my children, my daughter, she thought she wanted to go to one school, and we went there, and she was like, "Oh, not feeling it." So, that really is important, and I don't think always, as parents, we know exactly how to advise our children once you're there visiting, because that's a good point, typically, is on a weekend or a Saturday, what to look for and what to feel, and I think it's a great idea to go as a group. It's more fun, and you probably, then you get to talk to others about what their opinion was, and you don't get that experience when you just go with a mom or dad or whatever. So, I think that's such a great idea.
So, it was wonderful to go in a small, a very manageable, small group.
But that is our big challenge as we go on, because we even had another one set up to go in the middle of the summer to Fenway, and we didn't have enough students, because, you know, they're on vacation, they, you know, it's like, we all think it's valuable, and we know it's valuable, but it's just, they're so busy. You know, like, we're saying, "Oh, if we did it during April vacation, well, we have sports." Okay, so, we get to it. So, it's always something, and it's hard to get them to go unless you miss school time, and then that's-
That's tough, too.
That's tough, too. So, that's our biggest challenge, I think. I think we all understand the value of it, and we want to continue doing it, and thank you for letting us do that, but it's just finding the date that will work for most kids.
And so, we'll kind of juggle it around and try different options and see how it goes, because we told the students that we really didn't feel good about taking them out of school, because school time is so valuable, class time is so valuable, and actually, Delia said that you wouldn't want to miss-
Yeah. All those APs that I-
Yeah. Because, you know, one day, you feel like you're behind the eight ball, you know? So, we'll try, we'll kind of work it around and try maybe sometime during a vacation day. Philip said he would not give up a day in July.
I know.
So, a Saturday, we'll, you know, we'll figure it out.
But that's what we started with, the summer seminars. I think we're all aware of the, the college summer seminars, where we had about 85 students this summer come to get started on the process, so we realize that summer does have some flexibility, but, you know, there's also vacation, so I mean, there's only so much you can do, but we do need to get the kids started, and these two are the two new initiatives. We're doing the summer thing for about three years now.
Yeah, and those go very well, right in this lab, in this computer lab, and about 80 kids out of a class of, say, 200, come in into one of six different sessions, and then they're free to come back after they've come to the session where we go through. They can come back and work. I think the air conditioning attracts them.
Yeah, yeah.
They're happy to come in and sit in the lab and be nice and cool and work away. So, those have gone very well.
So, Joe, we may have a few questions. Is that all right? Are you ready for those, or you have more you want to present?
No, good, no. Go right ahead.
All right, Tina, go ahead.
Well, it's not really a question. I wanted to commend these guys, because I happen to know this trip was the day after school ended, so you, you finished your junior year and got right started on the whole college thing, so that's great. And I do think it's wonderful that you take a group of students. I hope, I think, thinking about the timing, there are so many challenges, but it's got to be much more fun to go with a group of students than to go with your parents. I'm pretty sure my own son would say that, definitely, but I think it's a great idea. And that trip to Boston, too, sounded like a really good one. I can understand why in July it would be hard to get a group of kids to go, but if we can figure something out, maybe, maybe April, because schools are in different breaks, so maybe there would be kids there, and maybe there would be enough kids who weren't involved, or who, maybe, you know, maybe get a little break on some of the sports, I don't know, but it would be really great to get a trip going in April for kids.
We've not given up on it. We still want to-
Oh, yeah, we'll keep working on it.
I just think it's a great idea, and I think, you know, what you guys have to say is so valuable, and it really does inform your decisions going, going forward. And thank you for those seminars, because getting a jump start before football and everything else starts is, is really important, so.
Busy time, once-
Yeah, September has now flown by, hasn't it? Have you guys done anything since you went to the April seminar, or August seminars with Mr. O'Neal? Yeah.
Have you completed them yet? I'll get after them tomorrow.
Get after Jack Bellinger while you're at it. Thank you for coming and sharing your experiences with us.
Other comments?
I was going to say, maybe staff development days, or mainly vacation days, because that's not the same as anyone else's, but then you have the sports. So, you play football-
Yeah.
Which is usually Friday.
Pretty much.
Yeah. It's going to be tough.
That's not a bad idea, though, but it-
Right, because no one else is going to have it off.
Hmm.
Is this the first tour you've taken out, this group?
This is the first group, yeah.
And how many? There were 15 of them?
Yeah, there were 15, and like Lorraine said, we had set up to go to Boston, to the Fenway colleges, but that was in July, it wasn't the day after school ended, so I think people's minds-
You lost them.
They were into vacation, yeah, yeah. But we'll figure out other ways. And this, we're very fortunate, because we're in an area where we can go to two colleges in a day's time.
Easy, easy.
No problem. We can even go to New Hampshire, we can go to Rhode Island, and still do it, you know, two places in one day, and be back here by 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, so.
What colleges are you going to visit in the Fenway?
Or by supper time, anyway.
Right.
The whole Fenway.
Is it all of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
They have a whole tour set up, where you just get a snippet of each, you know, so, yeah.
And they do all, they do it together.
My alma mater.
And with that, we could then go across-
Alma mater, Northeastern?
Yes. That's on it, yes.
With that one, we could go across the street and spend some time at Northeastern, after we do the five, and make it a six, so that's a very handy.
That's great.
And like, we can do a Providence and a Rhode Island college, or a URI, and Roger Williams, or UNH, and Merrimack. I mean, there's just so many combinations we can do, so. We'll keep at it.
Yeah.
And we'll keep you posted.
Other questions or comments from the committee?
Other than, I didn't recognize Joe when he was sitting in the audience, it made me sad. I don't know who he is. Sorry, Joe.
I did. I recognized him.
I didn't. Sorry.
So, I have a question for Phil, and Delia, and Joe, so, is there anything, while you guys are here, as you're wrapping up your time in the Foxborough schools, anything you guys would want us to invest in, or anything you've really liked related to Guidance and Mr. O'Neal's offerings, or anything, just while you, while you have the microphone, because we're here, we're here to prepare you, right?
It's your chance.
Anything, anything, anything we're doing real well, anything you want us to do more of?
I think it's really great to have Doug, we're always able to go in and talk to him about anything we need to, especially about college. Mr. O'Neal's been very helpful with all of us, so.
Thank you.
I think the, well, the summer seminars are very helpful. I didn't go because I had to work, and like, I had no way of getting out to Foxborough, but like, I think those are really helpful. I wish I had a car to come out here and have a head start in all this process, but I like that.
Catch you up, though.
I actually, I actually went to one of the summer seminars, and I already started with all, with like, applying to colleges with my Calming app, and that was really helpful to start, and like, know the website, and know where to go, where to fill out, and all that stuff.
Anything else you, you have a, a nice audience here. Anything else you can think of that would be helpful or useful?
They know where to find us, too, Joe, so.
Meeting the colleges were helpful, too, to like, know if you want to be there, or see ourselves in there in the future. That was very helpful. I think we should continue doing that, and like, go to other colleges. Maybe start a little earlier, too, for like, juniors to like, go, not at the end of this school year, but like, in between.
Right.
Earlier in the spring.
Yeah.
Definitely.
One of the things that we are measured by as a community is how many, what percentage of the senior class goes on to education, or the military, or jobs, and Foxborough does real well in that area, and we often talk here at this table about Ms. White, and especially Mr. O'Neal, and how fortunate we are to have them, someone who focuses on every individual senior, and preparing them, and giving them good options, so I think you guys have validated that for us, so thank you very much. And just before we let you go, Phil, was there a big football win recently that we should talk about?
Yeah, we had, we had a couple of big ones. We're 3-1 right now. A big one against Stoughton. They were previously ranked eighth in the state, and we got one-point victory on that, so.
I thought I heard something about that.
That was a big one. A big game this Friday against North Attleboro. I'll be one to watch.
All right, well, we wish all three of you guys a great senior year, and thank you, Lorraine and Joe, for all that you're doing.
Our pleasure, thank you.
Mike Pacla, anything? I see Diana on the back.
Yes.
Wednesday night, right, right here, Wednesday night, 6:30, a gentleman from Brown University, from the financial aid office, will present, you know, the facts on financial aid and the forms to be filled out and so forth. The half hour before that, in 1:22, Ellen Pillsbury, 6:00 to 6:30, will talk about the senior projects, or the senior internships, so you're very welcome to come to any of those.
And could any parent come to the 6:30 about financial aid? Doesn't have to be a senior parent, any parent at all, so I want to make sure I say that here, because there could be people who have sophomores or juniors-
That's right.
You, you know you should start thinking about it, but you don't, so come 6:30 on Wednesday here in the media center at the high school, and you'll start learning all you need to know, and maybe you don't want to know about financial aid.
Yeah, that's right. And we give everybody his PowerPoint, so they can take notes and then take it home if they heard too much in one night, they can go back and read it, so. We're working very hard to it, working with Jim Callahan, who, in the filming, to also put it on cable, so people who can't be there can see it on cable.
Great idea.
Excellent.
Mrs. Myers-Pacla, anything you want to add?
No, I just, I think it's an awesome program, and I hope we go forward. It is that, kind of, just that piece of finding the right time and dates for our students to be able to go out, and I just, I think it's a wonderful experience. Again, parents are busy weekends, it may not be a school that you were going to even consider, and have an opportunity to see another place, I think is fabulous, so that and the summer work. We're just so fortunate, you know, so fortunate, I think, to have a college counselor, much less the department, pulling and doing these things for our kids, because so many people hire that person, and here we have this person available for everybody in the community to be able to utilize, so.
That's true.
Thank you to all of you.
I think we're the only district I know that has a college placement counselor who is in addition to the regular guidance counselors, so. is in addition to the regular guidance counselors. So, and I can't imagine a college, university, anyone would be lucky to have any of you three, so.
Looking forward. It's an open ticket, anyplace you wanna go.
So Joe, we'll see you at UMass. Delia, we'll see you at Providence College. And Phil, we're gonna find you at Western New England and UMass.
And UMass.
Dual enrollment.
Yeah, we can do the commute.
Thanks for coming in, you guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck, Joe.
You probably leave one chair there.
Oh, yeah. Here, I'll leave two. It's all right, Phil, you can leave it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, Culture and Climate Survey Results 2017. Ms. Spinelli and Dr. Burtos.
Yes. So Amy gets our PowerPoint up there. What we're going to do is we're gonna take turns and go section by section and alternate so that we can sort of keep you, you know, engaged because it's, it's a long, it's a long survey result. So we're gonna, we met this afternoon, we're gonna alternate who's presenting each topic, but we're, we're not obviously gonna go through the whole presentation. You have it yourself. We will, at the end of each section, take any questions the committee has about that particular section and then we'll move on after that, if that would work for the committee. Just to remind people, my view, we've done this, we're trying to, we keep saying seven years and then we have six years of reported results. So Amy got to the bottom of that. The first year we did it was in the fall of when I first took over superintendent, 2011. So I knew we had done the survey in 2011, but because it wasn't spring, because we did, we went again in the spring of 2012. So we're only reporting our longitudinal data over the last six years because it was all given at the same time of year where the perceptions would be, you know, able to be looked at. But I knew that we had these first results when I started as superintendent because they became important to forming my plans as, as the new superintendent. So that's when we started, 2011. So the overview, obviously, is that we do the culture and climate surveys because we, A, we wanna be transparent about what things we're focused on in the district, but also because we value perception data. And this is something that's helped us in the, at the committee level, at the district level and at the school level, guide the, the things that we want to do better or do differently. And we've said before, we're not afraid of information or data. And this is soft perception data. It's how people feel about things or view things. And as you know, we've surveyed our students for all of those years since 2011. We survey, well, students in the middle and high school. We survey all of our parents and all of our staff. So as we end six and a half years of solid data, at the end, Amy and I are gonna go back to what's next. And we're, and we're gonna recommend something a little bit different for the what's next because one of the things we'd like to start on is talking about our participation rates. But for people who haven't heard us report about it at home, the overview includes the areas that we're asking for perspectives on. So it is a rather long survey. So we ask for people's participation on many aspects under each of these general areas: academic preparation, student support, school leadership, faculty relations and support, parent engagement and involvement, safety and behavior and school operations. So these surveys, we leave them open for a period of time. Staff, we hope most do it, but we've had some changes in that. Parents, obviously, it's an optional thing. We can't force people to sit at home and do the computer, but the more that people participate, the better we like the results. And the students, we can pretty much guarantee it on almost total participation because we do it during school, during a class period. So when you look at one of the first slides, if you wanna go to participation, that's slide three, we have seen a little bit of a downslide in participation and who's been participating in it and at what rate. So you can see that our participation rate in, over the various years, has gone anywhere from 70% to 88%. So in general, we had a, you know, 88% participation rate all in, in students and that hasn't changed. That's the student participation rate. When you go to the parents' participation rate, we don't have it because that, parents can take the survey for their, we ask them to take the survey for their oldest child in school. So if a high schooler, you take the survey for the, for the high schooler. If you want to repeat it for another level to answer the questions differently, if you feel differently at different levels, you may take it again for a child at a lower level, but you don't have to. So there's no real reliable way to calculate participation rate. And for staff participation rate, this year it was 65%, which, you know, our highest has been about, about 70 for staff. So when you look at the next slide where it says participants, sorry, I should have taken the staple out. Stapled almost in the middle of my page. I don't know why. When you look at participants by school level, and, and when Amy and I met and went over this, this afternoon, what we've seen is a little bit of a, of a decline in the number of parents participating in the surveys over, especially, you know, over the last couple of years. So we didn't have, we had much greater participation rates by parents at the elementary level certainly, at the high school level and at the middle school level, all three. So, and, and their staff participation rate is down a little bit. So one of the things that we wondered about, we, this is all produced, the report is, and the survey is administered by K-12 Insight, a company that we have a subscription to. So one of the things we talked with them about, and Amy and I have been talking a lot about is, you, do we have survey fatigue going on? Where people have taken almost this identical survey, each year we do put in additional questions that, you know, not each year, but some years, we've put in new sections if it's something that we want to dive deeper on, for example, guidance. And we'll get to that in a little bit later. But we do think that after seeing the same survey year after year, and when people are satisfied, you tend not to wanna sometimes take a survey. So we're, we're, we've come to the conclusion that on many levels for staff and parents, we've come to a little bit of survey fatigue where they've answered the questions before, we know how they feel, we see fairly standard, fairly, the stable results over time, and there's nothing new to say. So that's point number one I want you to think about as we, as we go along with this. One of our highlights has been overall perception of education quality. And it simply asks, what rating would you assign to your school? And we've had really wonderful ratings, of course, by staff. A total, 99% of staff said that, that they would assign our schools an excellent or good rating. And I know you would say expect that, but I don't know if all districts would see 99% of their staff saying that. And that, but I think that shows some, a relationship to some other things we've talked about here, which is people don't tend to leave here unless they're retiring or they've moved, you know, geographically. So we see a lot of retention rate on the part of staff. And you'll see later in the survey, staff also report that they're very happy to work here. That has been one of the most culturally significant things for us that we value a lot, is that we want this to be a good place to work. But more importantly, for the purposes of our public reporting, is that 95% of parents rate their child's school as good or excellent. And that's a really great number for us. It's been fairly consistent over time. And even though they're middle and high school students and sometimes you think they can be dissatisfied because some kids just don't like school in general, but 87% of our kids are saying their school is good or excellent. And that's, that's pretty good. So, you know, we like that overall perception. It allows people to get into the survey with a fairly simple, general question where they just have to make a choice. And then we start asking them much more detailed things. So on the next slide, it shows you our quality trends, how people have been reading it over time with basic, on the question that we just discussed. And what you see over time is that there, there is a huge message here. When you look at the blue on top for people watching at home that might not be able to read the fine print, the blue line is staff, the yellow line is parents and the green line is students. And the best news about this is that as last year, it's a message of positive perceptions and stability over time. So you see that in general, people are very happy with the schools over time. And that has been a very consistent thing over the last six years. And that's something we're really proud of. It also shows that parents' perceptions of schools aren't really far behind the staff perceptions. So there's fair consistency there with their positive perceptions.
I can interrupt you just for a moment.
Yes, please do.
I don't know that that's a surprise, but it's certainly reaffirming.
Yes.
And probably belongs in our community report somewhere if we don't already put that in.
Hmm.
That's a good idea for that one.
Hmm.
Because as a committee and as a leadership team in the schools and in the buildings, we strive for educational excellence, right? And we've talked about that for years. And this is a nice affirmation that we're not the only ones who feel strongly about the quality of the education in Foxborough.
That's a really good point. Because we often say, just because we say it doesn't mean it's true. But other people are also saying it. So I think that's.
That's a nice slide.
That's a great slide. We have several more level ones.
And your point, Debbie, about sustainability.
Right. We haven't had any bumpy years where people are saying, I don't know if this year I'm so happy. We don't see a downward trend. We're pretty high up, so I don't know if an upward trend is, trend is reasonable, but really not seeing people's perceptions change over time. And I think that's when people feel reassured about the schools, is when they don't see, when it's not volatile, that you have a good year, a bad year, a good press, bad press, that we like stability, obviously. All right. So the dimensions, all of those dimensions I read in the beginning, these are specific results about all the dimensions you see listed here. And this first slide isn't as helpful because it's, it's an amalgamation of everybody, student, staff and parents, and how they generally feel about things. So the, the only thing you can tell about this is of all of the dimensions, the one that, you know, we typically end up having more questions about is safety and behavior. Because in, in terms of perspective, that's the one that we, parent engagement and involvement, you know, students have different views of that, as you can see, than their own parents do. So we're always kind of amused by that where parents, kids will say their parents aren't very involved and parents say, I'm very involved. But other than, that's, that's a pretty stable and consistent result year after year too. But I think the safety and behavior is the area that we wanna know more about, that those aren't, you know, sometimes as high numbers were, were in terms of how the parents feel about that as they feel about the other dimensions. So they feel least positive about safety and behavior. And you'll see when we get to the perception data, you know, how we reach our perceptions is, is a composite of not just direct experiences we have, but how you view the world as well, whether you view that your kids are safe in different, in different settings and different locations.
Well, with some of the unfortunate things that have happened across the country.
I know.
I mean, from elementary schools to, to college campuses, it causes concern for parents.
Does.
This is not Foxborough.
No.
But it's, this, I think, is outside influences that cause some of that anxiety.
Mm-hmm. So we're gonna take a, a pause at that specific page for parents when we get to that, so that you can see a little bit deeper about what are the elements within that dimension that they had more concerns about or less concerns. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But I agree with you. So when you look at that, that's just, that, that will tell you. All right. So let's see. We are now on dimensions by elementary school stakeholders. So this is the slide 11, you can see. So this takes a look at elementary school staff and parents and how they hear about things, and how they feel about things. So you can see our elementary school staff is very high perceptions of between 91% and 97% on all the dimensions of how they, how well they feel we address these areas. Staff also has fairly high ratings from all, starting at 84% all the way up to 96%. But you can see that the one, the two that are at 84 and 85%, which is still strong around ac, academic preparation and, well, these are all about the same, student support and safety and behavior. So there's, there's more of a deep dive when you get to the later slides. So I'm gonna sort of not spend a lot of time on these. Dimensions by secondary stakeholders, you can see that the school staff gave fairly high ratings for safety and behavior, but the parents less so. And academic preparation, the same. Now, this is gonna be contrasted to the students. So if you look at parents, 78% had positive perceptions of academic preparation at the middle and high school. But if you just, oh, we didn't do students. No, we'll get to students in that when we get to academic preparation. Amy's gonna address that because the kids actually reported higher perceptions of how well the school is preparing for. And they're the ones that are actually experiencing school. And I think that also is, you know, it's all subject to our personal experiences, isn't it? That our, our kids could feel they're being really prepared or you could feel they're really prepared. Another party would say, well, I don't know, is that relative? Is my kid gonna go to college? Are the, you know, there's so many things to be concerned about. So we're gonna do a deeper dive now when it comes to academic preparation and all of the subcategories of that dimension. I'll turn it over to Amy.
So this staff slide here on looking at academic preparation, when you look across the change over time, you can see that it's, it continues to be really high. And you're kind of hitting the ceiling when you look at those percentages there. And the, the ones that I think that are really important too is when it talks about teachers work together to ensure student success and to give timely feedback on student work. Collaboration is so important. We know that no matter what field you go into, we want people to be able to work collaboratively. And our staff does work very collaboratively for our students. So seeing there that the staff has high marks. And, and then again, looking across parents and students when it comes to academic preparation, if you look in that last column of average.
Can you just go back for a second to, to the previous one, staff? So this is a good slide to just give a little introductory though thing. Because see the right-hand column, average change, this is something we started with them just recently, with the last year or two, where over the course of six years, now that we have such great longitudinal data, K-12 Insight calculates the average change on that dimension. So anything in the positive direction is positive. Anything in the negative direction is a concern. Zero is good though, because if you're already at a really high level perception, so if you already have 95 to 97% of staff saying curriculum instruction assessment are aligned to support student learning, you're not gonna have much change. So zero is good, stability as long as the numbers are high. So that's just, look, the right-hand column on these next several slides are really where you want your eyes to go. Okay, sorry.
And so that's there on the parents that you see that too, on the average change over time, seeing, seeing those positive trends with the zeros, the plus ones. And that when we, when we look at the parents, particularly with, you know, my child's being prepared to do well at the next grade level and to see that 91% of parents strongly agree or agree there, that, that's really important because we know that it, it's, it's every year and making sure our students, it's cumulative. When we talk about getting to high school as our college seniors were here and that we're preparing them at each grade level. And then looking at the feedback that's there, the instruction that's appropriate, the high expectations, the feedback from teachers on tests and quizzes and helping our students. If you look down at the parent, I mean, at the student's response on that, you see that 67% of parents here respond that that feedback is there, but students are at 89% when you look down below. So it, it's important to think about from this parent perspective on those same questions and then look at where the students are because they're the ones that are in class and receiving the feedback. So that's another piece that we look at closely is what, what's the parents' perception here? And then does, is it aligned or is there a mismatch with students? And if so, why? And then digging a little bit deeper at different levels to see why that might be the case if we do have discrepancies there. When you look at the students there, there's, there's certain questions that we didn't ask in the first few years of the survey when it comes to feedback for how I improve. And that was one of those examples that Debbie was saying before, how we add questions. When we look at discrepancies or we want to drill down a little bit more. So adding questions there to get a little bit more information to help us. So it's only been asked for two years, so the, the average change rate is two years' worth of data. But it is a good example, I think, of looking at students over time and then across the board there, the perception of students and that it's positively increased across all those dimensions.
The one we'd like to point out, for example, and this came up in the strategic planning for students, oh, my teachers show me how our lessons relate to life outside of school. So remember, we were talking in the strategic plan that we want to have more, more, greater part of the curriculum or specific lessons devoted toward showing kids that these things have practical and, you know, practical applications. And you will need these things in your life. And I think we all can relate to being in high school math or whatever, saying, am I really ever gonna use this? Am I gonna ever do calculus? But it's important for our kids to know that many of these things are involved in careers that you may want to consider and you may not wanna rule out at this early stage of your life. But it's, it's hard. So we had a long talk at the administrative retreat with all of our, our large administrators, our department heads, that showing the relevance of certain things is easier in some contents, in some subject areas than it is in others. And in knowing who your audience is is easier in some than others. So we, we had a, a long discussion about how we can do more of that. And I know you see that in the strategic plan and other things that we've talked about as well.
And it varies by level too, not just content areas too.
Yes, that's true. All right. Questions about, any more questions about academic preparation? All right, student support. So student support has to do with whether there are resources and connections in school that can help students when they might struggle or when they need support for almost anything. And what, what do we have in place for student support? So the, and, and it surveys things like, do you have somebody to go to when you have a problem about school? And so this first one, when it comes to staff, you can see that it's, you know, staff generally has a positive perception of how well we do in schools. And I think our staff is aware that we have more supports here because of what we're able to achieve here with our budget and positions than they know from their friends who teach elsewhere. So the important slide we wanna spend time on though is, is parents and then on students, because that's really what we, I think, care about as a, as a community right now. So when it comes to parents, if you look at the first two questions, we had, we've had several discussions actually at, in several contexts, but here, included at school committee level, about the difference between the first and the second. So one of the items says, there's a teacher counselor, counselor or other staff member at the school who my child can go to for help with a school problem. And we've always had pretty high perceptions of that from parents and from, for students. And you can see the same. It's anywhere in the high 80s to the 90s, no mid 90s saying, yes, my child or I am a student, I have somebody to go to if I have a school problem and I, I know who that is and I trust I can go to. We've, we've traditionally, as you can see, have had much lower perception ratings for the next question. There's a teacher counselor or staff member at school who my child or I can go to for help with a personal problem. And we've had some philosophical discussions about, some parents do expect their children to go to a counselor or school staff about a school problem, but they don't want their child going to a school staff for a personal problem. And they may actually discourage it depending on the family dynamics or what the problem is. But we want to make sure that when, if a child really needs help with a personal problem, that we have provided the structures where kids have somebody to go to. That's really, regardless of how there might be parental differences in their perception of that or family differences, that we know that we need to have that. So those, the difference between those two questions is significant because as you can see, for parents, we're going in the right direction. We have had more positive views that they know their child can go to somebody for both school and personal problems, and they're both on the plus side. Students have had even a greater growth on the going to a staffer or counselor or staff member at school about a personal problem. So that's why you see in students on the next slide, that students are a plus two on that. That was really one of our better news things, that we are creating a climate where children can feel comfortable disclosing whatever it is that they wanna talk about with a trusted adult at school. Because sometimes there's not somebody at home to go to either. We have to acknowledge that, that could be true. So we were very happy with the student perception page because it shows that over time, we are certainly increasing. And in the next area, we had great results, teachers. are certainly increasing, and in the next area, we had great results, "Teachers and staff treat students fairly regardless of their backgrounds and differences." This is critical to a healthy school climate, where they, they really feel that that's true, and students are reporting higher and higher levels of that. And then the last part of this section is student support for high school students only. This is an entire section that we added in two thousand and fifteen, and it, and we had discussions, and part of our goals at, at the committee level and the district level is to, and you just saw that, it's a great night to report this, 'cause the guidance people just left, but we have really upped our game, if you will, about the guidance services and communication with guidance and services from guidance. So these questions ask the, the students, high school students, "Does the guidance counselor help them select courses to prepare them for the future college and career? Does the guidance department, through group guidance and individual meetings, assist you with the college application process? Does the guidance department provide helpful, helpful information regarding graduation requirements and academic rigor? Are they available for academic and social emotional support? And do they provide you with information and assistance regarding the standardized tests that our students unfortunately have to do, the SAT, the PRC, the PSAT, the ACTs, AP tests, or MCAS?" And this is a really good new slide, because we're all in the plus column. So over the three, three short years that we've been surveying students on this, we've seen some great gains in this, and the plus threes especially are, were very pleasing to us, that the kids are seeing that we're providing more and more for them. Questions about student support? All right. Parent engagement.
So again, you see the message there across the board, and that it's positive perception there when we look from the staff perspective of the parents that are engaged, and engaged in communications in many different modes. Also, feeling that they're welcome and encouraged to attend activities. We see parents at so many of the different offerings that we have here. But then too, if there's an academic need, being there and, and having parents have that true partnership, because it is a partnership when we think about teachers and parents, and we're all here for our kids, and being able to, to see the value that's there and the parent input that really is looking at, how can we really wrap around our kids and be there in so many different ways? When we look at that same slide from the parents' perspective, again, I just think that it's just really positive from how they feel as far as being welcomed, being kept informed about their students' grades, their behavior, their, their overall learning experience. Opportunities that we do have here that I think that are wonderful when it comes to the tutoring, the academic support labs that we have, teachers that are staying after school and working with students, teachers being available to parents to talk about any of their learning needs and questions that they have. When you're, when you have up in the ninety percentile from parents' perspective and seeing that teachers are there, that's letting you know that we are there and teachers are there for students. And when we look at the students' perspective here, that's, that's some of the ones where we get kind of the, the chuckle here, because parents are saying, "We're really involved, teachers see it," and then you ask students, and, you know, whether it comes to homework, I mean, you look at that, that one there, it's, again, it's an increase over your average change over the years, but when you look at the, the lower percentile, what pops out there is another family member or tutor helps me do my homework. Honestly, I think that as you get older, parents feel that they are not adequate in helping with some of the homework that's there, because of just, you heard about our students tonight, the AP courses, and it's probably been a while since some have taken AP courses.
They also don't often tell you whether they really have homework, or, anyway, just recalling some thoughts. Sometimes they're like, "Oh, I don't have any homework," so.
You gotta refrain from commenting.
That seems to cross the generations.
I'm hoping two volunteers are home doing their homework right now.
And then, you know, when it comes to volunteering, you see it at the elementary more so, higher levels of volunteering, but there's so many different ways that I think sometimes students don't realize ways their parents are volunteering, because they don't see them physically in the school, but there are so many ways that parents are volunteering through all of our different clubs and organizations and the time that they put in, too. And that part, I don't feel really grabs that as much when it's, because I think students think about it more, you know, at school, in the school, but there's other ways to-
That's true.
-show how they're volunteering.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the hot topic, safety and behavior. This, this staff perceptions, and as you can see, we have, you know, the first several where the students are safe at school, discipline is enforced in the school, bullying and threatening behavior is rare in the school, alcohol and drug use is not a problem at the school, these are the items that are under, do students respect teachers at the school? I have the support I need to maintain order and discipline at the school. So we, we've seen some, some changes in this area, and we dug a little bit deeper in some of them. And so if you look at the last few, where you're seeing like a minus four, minus two, minus one, we've had a long talk about this at our last administrator, the state of team meeting, and, you know, in, in days subsequent. So one of the things that we've come to realize is that, you know, we have had a change in philosophy about student discipline. I'm gonna explain this the best I can, and then I know, I hope Amy will chime in. So what we talked about at length is that we've gone from kind of a traditional, you know, discipline means imposing consequences, that some kind of infraction has occurred, whether it's a little kid running in a hallway, or a high school student with something more serious, that discipline is thought of traditionally as consequences meted out, whatever they are, small consequences, talking to the principal, or large consequences. But because we've done so much work in social emotional learning the last several years, as most schools have done, we've shifted to a philosophy that when kids don't behave, whether they're young children, whether they're old kids, but let's just take little kids, when kids don't behave the way we hope they would, that we see it as a skill deficit, no difference than read, no different than reading or math. So a child's struggling to acquire literacy skills, a child's struggling to acquire numeracy skills, they have skill deficits that we understand and accept pretty readily, and we know they're still developing, and we give them a lot of leeway and encouragement to do it. And that we have shifted to feeling, to knowing that behavior and choices that you make about, you know, choices you make, personal choices you make for yourself, and following rules and codes of conduct are also a growth and development opportunity, and the kids who don't exhibit it yet, we see as having skill deficit now. So all of the work we've done under social emotional learning, that's how we view it, and that if the kids don't have the skills yet in that area, we don't judge them and just punish them and hope that the suppression of the behavior results in long-term improvement. So we're not into the discipline, and we still do discipline, there's still a consequence, I think everybody knows that, but we don't look at it as a short term, we suppress the behavior, we mete out a consequence, and then we hope for the best, that we actively work with the student as to grow and develop the skills that they have not yet exhibited or that they currently lack. And I think what we're saying is that we need to do a better job communicating that change in philosophy to the staff, 'cause even though they've had the training in Think Kids and the problem-solving collaborative problem-solving approaches that we use now, that we need to communicate that just because we're doing collaborative problem-solving with kids now, don't think that discipline isn't in place, 'cause we're still using a very traditional word in here, discipline, which the connotation is consequences, and we view discipline as a growth opportunity now. So I think we have a, we have a perception problem, but we have a, a difference of trying to frame it differently, so that teachers have had that training, but we need to all view it as a different set of philosophies, and, and not think that kids aren't being disciplined, so that, so that, let's say you have a first grader who is violating rules in an elementary school, it could be about behavior in a hallway, it could be about pushing and shoving, that in, in the traditional time, the child would be sitting on the bench outside the principal's office for the discipline, and we would all see that, and we would say, "Yes, discipline is enforced in the school." Now, we've got counselors involved saying, "Okay, so why isn't, why isn't this child able to follow the codes of conduct for walking in the hallways?" And the signs are posted, they, we actually have rules for behaving in the hallway posted publicly, and what is, is it something going on in that child's life? We all know that there are things like that. We don't, we don't ignore the root causes of the behavior. So we dig a little bit deeper, find out what's going on with the child, is it something physically, is it socially, emotionally, adjustment-wise, is it developmental? And then we try to get the child to a better place. So it can be sometimes not seen as discipline. Does that help explain a little bit?
Yeah, I, I just think that too, when you, so if you take those elementary examples, and we're thinking about, in the past, it may have been more about being motivational and really motivating. It's not just about being motivational, it really is about developing those skills for students and, and learning, and learning those. The other part, too, is, is going back to, you know, not asking why, it's what is going on to really get at the root there to be able to find out why a particular behavior is there? Because once you can recognize it, then you can work with it if you can understand it.
Did the chapter two-two-two, I think it's called, did those laws change any of the discipline for Foxborough?
You're gonna have to give me a little more information, 'cause I'm sure you're surprised that I don't have all those chapters of the law memorized.
It changes the way, like, you can suspend a child and all, and the different discipline procedures.
Well, those change every once in a while.
And we follow those, and we, we've had assistant principals and principals go to those workshops and to follow the law and to make sure that we're in a line with those, so.
So I, you have to tell me specifically what part of it, of the law you're, you're asking about.
Uh, no, it's, I guess my answer is no.
Okay.
'Cause in Brockton, it completely changed everything that we had to do.
Give me like an example.
Uh, no suspensions.
Well, there's no law that says kids can't be suspended.
I'm choosing my words carefully.
Oh, all right. Well, anyway, we can discuss that at another time. I'm not sure what, what we, what I could add to that right now, I'm not sure, 'cause every situation's different, whether it's the law and, or not, I think every situation can be different. But I think, Amy, your word about motivation, in the past, we thought if we disciplined them and have given a consequence and suppressed the behavior, or even the traditional reward systems, we're just trying to motivate kids to do better. And if you think about it exactly the same way we think about reading and math, I could be a six-year-old who hasn't yet acquired my literacy skills, you can motivate me all you want, but I don't have the skills yet, so I'm not gonna show up tomorrow being more motivated and suddenly be a good reader. So we just view them the same as, as the, as the other areas of skills that they're developing.
And, and I think, just on a, on a personal note, because we have children and they're all different, I can think about my youngest constantly being told to slow down, "You need to slow down." And it was the day when he came forward, and he said, "Everyone continues to tell me to slow down. I don't know how."
Interesting.
So it's really taking that step back, and there's a skill deficit there, and okay, what are the ways to go about working with him or any child? How do I do that? What does that look like?
So, we're still digging in, we're digging in about that. Um, let's see, all right, parents, safety and behavior. So, parents, if you, this is, this, this, the last one, that minus four there, I'm gonna say can be a little misleading, because the question was worded differently the first year out, then we realized that, that the wording wasn't helping. So if, in the two thousand, I think we would have a different number in the right-hand column if we ignored two thousand and twelve as thinking about a some kind of baseline, because in two thousand and twelve, it said, "Students do not threaten or bully each other at the school," which is the way the company worded the first year. And we realized after that that that's not helpful, because it's so black and white, they either do or they don't. And so we wanted, as you can see, something is rare, so we needed a more of a continuum, if you will, to react to, not just answer it as a yes or no question. So once we did that, we've had fairly consistent results, anywhere from, you know, the high forties to, you know, the mid-fifties. So that's, those are, those are low numbers for us, but one of the things that we've explored, and principals explored as well, with, with parents, with staff, with everyone, is that, you know, what, how do you define, you know, and we, since the beginning of time, we've struggled with this, how do you define, define bullying and threatening behavior? We know what threatening behavior is, but bullying under the law is, is a complex and multi-layered definition. So the true definition of bullying has to, three things have to be present, it has to be a power imbalance, it has to occur multiple times, it has to occur over time, it has to be repetitive, it has to be physical or, or verbal, or it could be, you know, social segregation. So there has to be certain things that has. The, the layperson, though, defines any conflict as bullying. And so we have to work really hard, I think, and maybe harder to educate parents, that, that bullying is a very complex thing. So I, I personally would prefer that this says, you know, harassing, mean behavior, because bullying is something that we have to report to the state every year, anytime that, and we have to keep records, we have to keep records of whether student A has been the, the target of any kind of incident, and then if we see a pattern over time, then we have to decide if it's bullying or not, because we have to go by the legal definition of it. But I think the average person thinks any mean remark, and sometimes the conflict is among friends, you know, you and I are friends, I made a mean remark, did I bully her? It could be just a conflict among friends. We have several categories of unpleasantness that we, that don't always rise to the definition of bullying or threats. So that's another thing. But, you know, in general, a message of stability on parents, from parents that, you know, in general, things are pretty good. All right, safety and behavior, students. So when it comes to figuring out whether we've communicated the definition, we've worked really hard with the kids, who we do have access to, to help them understand what bullying is or isn't, and how conflicts do occur among children, sometimes your friends, sometimes not your friends, and what you can do about it, how you can take responsibility for solving social problems, just like you do math problems and everything else. So we're thrilled with the plus five, that, although, although it's not gonna be a plus five if you take out two thousand and twelve, so that's not it. But in general, kids are reporting fairly, you know, good reports on, that they feel that bullying and threatening is rare at their school. So it wouldn't be a plus five if we took out the original, so that's another one. But in general, we've got a lot of pluses for kids, where they think that, that they're reporting less drugs and alcohol in their perception, they're reporting better results on that students do respect teachers at that school, which is really important. Okay, next slide. Student bus riders, this is a great piece of news for our, our, our transportation department, that we've had great gains since the, over the six years, that students are reporting they feel safe when they're on the bus, and they feel safe waiting at the bus stop. Those are pretty high for kids, we're saying eighty-nine, ninety-three on those questions. The last one, "My school bus runs on time most days," eh, we're averaging about seventy to seventy-five percent on that, when our kids' perception of whether the bus runs on time. I don't know if our kids are wearing watches, but they're probably looking at their phones, so maybe they do know. But our transportation department, this is great news for them, is that, is that I think in the beginning, when we were, when we were doing a lot of our safety plans in, in schools, say, in the last ten years, more ten years ago, that there was a perception of concern about the bus, and behavior on the bus, and whether kids were safe on the bus, whether other kids might be aggressive or whatever, and, and we've had nothing but really positive perceptions of our transportation department and our, our buses and our drivers, so I'll shout out to them, we don't talk about them very often. They're great.
So, we move on down to school operations, we're, we're looking at instructional materials, this is the staff slide here, and we have, the, the high marks that we have there, you can clearly see that staff here in Foxborough, thanks to the community, are supported, and they feel supported. When it looks at instructional materials being in good condition, they have what they need to be able to effectively teach the students that are in front of them. When you look at whether it's computers or internet, all of those instructional aids that they need in order to do what they do with students for teaching and learning, you're, you're hitting the ceiling there when it comes to, they truly feel-
I would challenge any other district to get ninety-seven percent of your staff to say that you have everything you need and that your instructional materials are in good shape. So, we all be proud of that.
Right, and they, and they are, are very appreciative, and we hear that, you hear that here at this table when they come forward with teaching and learning highlights and on other events, too. Healthy food is served at this school, again, over time, it's, it's positive, but people all have different opinions on, on food, so I think that when we move to the next slide, and you're, and you're looking at some of those, you see some consistencies there, but importantly, again, when we, we talk about teaching and learning, and that chi, that children here are provided with instructional materials that they need to learn and grow in classes, whether, again, it comes to the computers, it comes to the instructional resources and what's provided, such high marks, I mean, ninety-eight percent of parents knowing that their, their students have access to computers and the internet and what they need for learning, as well as the instructional materials at ninety-five percent, too. So when you're hitting that, that high, that percent change, to have a zero or a plus one is still pretty, pretty impressive and such a great tribute from our parents. The, the healthy food served in the cafeteria, it's pretty consistent with teachers that you see there, looking at things such as the price of school lunch, that's fair. The eighty-one percent of parents, again, it's, it's lunch and it, it costs money.
But I mean, it's, it's less than three dollars, so I don't know anywhere you can get a lunch at less than three dollars. So I know it's money, and some people don't think that's fair, but you have to charge something, 'cause it's not free. I still think our school price, lunch prices are pretty reasonable. I still think our school price, lunch prices are pretty reasonable.
They are. But across the board, when we look at staff, we look at parents, we look at students, when, again, it comes down to the classroom and teaching and learning, such high perception across the board, when you're looking at the high 90s there. And that's what, that's really what we're in the business of, is teaching and learning and having our kids grow. And so, to have that perception from all three stakeholders, I think is pretty impressive. The food, everyone has different opinions. Over time, we see that it's, you know, a nice increase there, but we've also had so many federal guidelines that have come into play, that have taken place over the last several years, so that's going to impact there. But again, you're seeing positive trajectory.
Can I interject something there too? Cause one of the interesting things coming out of last year is that our participation rate went up by 15% last year. And typically, kids aren't gonna buy something they don't like or feel is, you know.
Well, that's what I was actually going to say, is, you know, the comment, or the, it's fresh, high-quality food is served at this school. Well, I mean, the kids, they're like, well, it's, you know, I like my hamburgers, I like my chicken patty sandwiches. Well, they're maybe not the freshest, highest quality, but that's what they like to eat. So, I don't know, I don't know exactly what I'm trying to say here, except that the kids are enjoying their lunches, they may not be, you know, I don't know, you could try to feed my kid salad every day and they wouldn't eat any of it, you know?
Which we do.
So, you could serve all the fresh, high-quality food you want, and they wouldn't buy it, so.
And these are kids taking perceptions, so, they may read that question, you know, healthy, whatever, you know, high-quality food is served, they're probably thinking, well, yeah, but I don't like it, I don't wanna eat it, so I'm gonna give that one, I disagree. You know, it's all perception, but it's okay, cause we're still going up in the kids' minds, we're still not where we wanna be. But I think Bill's point that school lunches, participation, going up by 15% is huge. So I give our, Janice is in her second year with us, but that was her first year. 15% increase in participation, that's telling you something.
And I also think of the point that Deb made earlier, this is a $3 lunch, which includes, you know, milk and a protein and a salad bar, and all of these other items for $3. I mean, you know, again, as an adult, we go out and for $15 for a lunch, we probably don't get much better as far as the quality of the food that we're buying. So, you know, it's a hard perspective, but, you know, again, it's the market we're also trying to feed, so.
Alright, alright, school leadership. Everyone knows how much I value school leadership. I think that it's, you know, when I said to the staff on the first day, we have high expectations for faculty and our staff, and they have high expectations for themselves. But more importantly, we have high expectations for our school leaders, that if we are gonna have those high expectations of them, then they deserve to have people to work for that are fair and reasonable and have high standards for their own educational leadership, and be good people to work for at the same time. You know, tough, reasonable, but good people. So, this is a very important piece for me as a superintendent. So you see, the staff has reported very high, over time, very high and consistent perceptions that the principal makes decisions in the best interest of the students, I know what the principal expects of me as a teacher, the administrators encourage staff involvement in decision-making, the principal has confidence in my teaching ability, the principal provide helpful use of feedback about my instructional practices, that's very important to us, the faculty has an effective process for making group decisions to solve problems, in the school, we do take steps to solve problems, and the teachers have an appropriate level of influence on decision-making in the school. So those are all how they view the leadership is working and their participation in the leadership. And those have all been consistently high for us, you know, over time. Alright, that's the staff. So now we're going, now we're digging, that's just, oh, that was only a staff question. So now, this is related, faculty relations and support is related to their perceptions on school leadership. Alright, so, the important things on this slide for teachers, there's so many important things, I have a lot of stars, so I'm gonna try to summarize. What were really important to us, that we've been working hard on, is the idea of collaboration. To find time for collaboration for teachers has been a longstanding goal. We were able to achieve it, it's always been achieved at the middle school through the way they run their periods, and they can have grade-level time and collaboration time because of the nature of their schedule. It's really difficult at the high school, and they're still working on creative ways, they're trying actually something new, but this year, it's only a month in, but they've built it more into their schedules than the high school, so if people teaching courses try to have it. The downside is it does affect student scheduling, to some extent, in some pockets and not in other pockets. So, they're experimenting with that this year to see how that's working, and they're probably gonna keep tweaking it. So we do still have needs for that at the high school. But overall, if you look at the first question and the last, both related to collaboration, we've had a plus two and a plus three over the six years, that in terms of their perceptions of whether we encourage collaboration among teachers and staff, and whether they have time available. And the time available has been our biggest barrier. And, you know, we have a plus three on that. So you can tell we're working hard and we're achieving something, but we're a little bit held back still at the high school. So this is a composite of how all the staff feels, but when we dig deep, elementary, middle and high school, it's really the high school that still has some struggle on that. When you look at some other things, look at 99% of our teachers say they enjoy teaching at the school. And that's really, I mean, we want teachers to love what they do.
I highlight it, yeah.
That is so important to us, because if this isn't a good place to work, you're not gonna give the best you can to your kids. So we hope people go to work and love what they do, and if they don't, we hope they don't work here. And I think that really shows, like, what we believe in and what our teachers believe in, and they really do, you can see that they, our teachers love what they do, and they love where they work. And that's, you can get so much more for students when the adults feel that way about their work environment. The other things on this slide that are really important, the second question, the professional development sessions I have attended have helped me better meet my students' learning needs. This is a plus three over six years, and I give all the credit to Amy and her team, because these are, it's hard, as you can imagine, I'll look at Chris, to have teachers have positive perceptions about professional development. Because we do planned professional development. It's sometimes easier to have positive perceptions if we just give you free time, or say, well, you schools, work it out yourselves, and do school-based PD. You can call it PD, but it doesn't mean it is. We do all of ours planned on where our strategic objectives lie, what we want teachers to focus more on, what they have reported to us that they want more time on. So they've built in choice sessions for teachers, they've also listened to teacher feedback. So I would like Amy to elaborate on, but that's a great point of pride for Amy and her PD team, that we've really grown in that area. It's a tough nut to crack.
Well, I think you wanna make sure that you're meeting the teachers' needs, so whether it's coming out of the curriculum program reviews and what those recommendations are, it's very targeted, it's very specific to what they're asking for in order to build on their craft. And then also, when we talk about social-emotional learning, yes, we had a program review for that, but it's also just how things have changed in classrooms, and helping give teachers the tools in their toolboxes when we're talking about skill deficits and how to really attend to the students that are in front of them. So, I think that they feel as though their voice is heard, and that we really are trying to meet their needs, so they can best meet the needs of the students.
Yep. And the next question, we'll let Erin, who's sitting in the back, our tech director, the third question is about whether technology is available, not technology is available, sorry. This is about if support is available to help them integrate the technology into their classrooms, which is where we are with it, not just having stuff, but doing stuff. And I think this speaks to the support they feel from the tech integration specialists, from all the teams that we have working to help use technology to deliver the curriculum, not to have technology for technology's sake. So 98% of our teachers said that support is available to them to help incorporate computers and other technology into instruction. I think other technology is more important than the word computers, cause we have so many other technologies. So, kudos to the committee and everyone for supporting that we've, when we've come for those requests, and we're in a good place right now with that types of support. It's making a difference, truly. Alright, interactions with school leaders. This is staff, very high perceptions of interactions, and when we're saying interactions, we mean, if you're a teacher, is your administrator available to talk to you? Was the administrator courteous? Did the administrator listen to you? Did they respond to concerns professionally? So we're, you know, 94, 96, 97%, which is terrific. Parents, interactions with school leaders. This is about, do the parents believe that principals make decisions that are in best interest of the students? And that if you've had an issue or concern to discuss with the principal or assistant principal, were they available, were they courteous, and did they listen, and did they respond to the concerns professionally? So, understanding that these are relatively high perceptions, because all of the people who answered these last three questions were only people who had an issue. If you've never had an issue or concern to discuss with the minister, you didn't answer, it's a branching survey, so you didn't get those questions. So, that's actually pretty good. Over time, we've been in the hiatus or early 90s about that. And that doesn't mean that everyone felt the same, it's just, were they courteous and handled it professionally? I like that one. Alright, on to educational programming.
So, under these other topics of looking at programs, what's important here is, this is staff saying what they feel is most important. It's not what they feel that they're needing more of, it's really what they see is most important. And if you look there at the staff, it's all about the students. It's about meeting the students, the support for them if they have special needs, or if they need enrichment and challenge programs. And again, that partnership with the homeschool connection. So, that's what staff are saying, are really, they're focused on students and that's what's most important. And looking at parents, you see that mirrored there. Again, the enrichment and challenge programs, opportunities for extending learning, that partnership for the connection, and that they very much value the art and music education. And we're known for that, just as we talked earlier about the dedication of the music suite and our art and all of the fine arts, and it's valued, and it shows up here. With district operations, again, what's most critical when we think about education in general, it's staff saying, having and valuing what the committee supports, which is small class sizes, having our guidance counselors here to support the social-emotional learning needs of students. And then, they also realize that it comes from central office here in that being very supportive of all of those operations, and that made us feel really good to know that they see that, they know that we're here to support, along with all of you in the community, what they need. Parents, again, small class sizes and the school counselors being there for social-emotional needs, but also what we saw with the teaching and learning highlights, and helping students with career and academic, you know, planning going forward, we saw that, and then again, valuing, number one, the high-quality teachers that we have here. Across the board, parents still prefer email as far as communication, telephone, in-person meetings. Communication, we know, is really critical, and that's been very consistent over time. These next couple of questions here on transition from middle school and high school is something that we've looked at over time, and you can see that all of the efforts that have been put here, we've had some nice gains here. It really does show the support and the teachers and administrators at the middle school and from the elementaries, and what's been done to really help make sure that kids, as they transition from elementary to middle school, that they have a positive experience with the staff as well. So to have 92%, you know, my child was provided with that useful information as far as changing, you've got three elementaries and they're going into a much larger school, that can be quite scary to see that perception there, that we're making a difference and a positive difference.
Right to high school, I guess.
The high school transition here, again, it's taking our middle school and moving them up to high school. You don't see the percentage as high here, we see some declines over time. One of my, you know, thoughts here is that the time of year that we offer, I mean, it was June, and all of these transitional activities that take place are happening in August and September. But then at the same time this year, we had our highest attendance rate of our students coming into the high school, we had 95% attendance of students coming in and partaking in the transitional activities that were planned. So, you've got the attendance rate that's there, but I also think that we do have to keep in mind time of year. This happens in August and September, and then over the summer even with things that are taking place, like what we've heard before, but.
Well, the other part of it, I'm gonna interrupt you, is that it's a different transition. When your kids are going from fourth grade to fifth grade, you're doing field days, and you're doing, you know, movie nights, and you're doing information nights, and the parents are very involved in going to all these activities. So they're actually seeing some of the transition. When kids are going from middle school to high school, they come here and have a tour and go to lunch, but their parents aren't with them. And when.
They're not experiencing it directly.
So you're asking the parents, but the parents really aren't as, and I'm not suggesting that the parents should be involved. I think that this is, it's part of, you know, growing up and being, you know, moving from middle school to high school, but I think the parents are less involved in the transitional activities. And I think sometimes, like, even when the high school guidance counselors go down and meet with the eighth graders and talk to them about their schedules, it's all dependent on whether your child, your eighth-grade son, comes home and talks to you about it.
We send kids down here to talk to them too. So, you know, that's a really good point.
There are a lot of things that happen that take place.
They may not be as aware of all the activities, so they're not experiencing it directly themselves.
That's just my thought on that.
I think it's a really good point.
I do think some of the things that happen over the summer are excellent, but, you know, the communication piece, to make sure that, you know, parents know about the, when the student council does their tour, I know it's on the sign, and we send, you know, connect it out, but just making sure that people, you know, don't miss that piece over the summer. But the stuff that happens in the spring is all good, but it's all really for the kids, and it's not for the parents. That's just my observation.
These numbers may be skewed.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
So the other, the last two slides are just, you know, collection of information about what parents attend, so, you know, I don't think we're gonna report on that. But we'd like to just end with our new ideas. So, we discussed with K-12 a lot about, this is good longitudinal data, and we've done this a lot, but we're seeing our participation rate go down. So, and is there any new information to be gleaned by asking these same questions for more than six years? And we've come to the conclusion that probably not, we've been so stable and positive over time, that maybe it's time to just put a little different angle on it. So, one of the things that K-12 offers is a difference, some commonalities, but some differences, on a culture survey, one that they've developed since we started with this one, and we do want to ask the same one, so we have this data, but we think it's time to put a period at the end of the sentence. And the other survey that they've developed is now, you can have national comparisons. This one, you can't. So if we switch to the other survey, it may not be as comprehensive as this, but it will allow us to say, okay, so, you know, the ones that we don't like, cause we're only at like 60% instead of 95, where we like to be, but maybe if, but this other survey will allow to say, okay, we don't like that 60% on some aspect of safety and behavior, whatever. But if they were able to tell us that across the country, the average is 35, then we may be thrilled with our 60, you know, for perceptions about certain things. So this is soft data, perception data is considered soft data, not our data. So, we actually think that's a better idea, and because it would be asking some different things, it can mix it up a little bit, we think that that might boost, you know, reboot the interest in giving us some of this feedback. So we thought we'd pitch that to you and see what you think of that before we proceed.
Thoughts?
I think it would be interesting data to see, certainly for comparison purposes. I'd be interested in it. And I do think it's important to continue to ask these questions, but perhaps in a different format or a different, you know, put a different spin on it.
So we're gonna get a look at the other one.
So it doesn't get stale.
And we can add the questions to that one.
We can still do that.
And then, some of our conversations, when we looked at the bullying questions or the school safety, so, when those questions have been similar across some of those other surveys they've done, we've asked that question, well, what does this, is it typically this where you see your lower numbers? Yes. So if we had one that we could really compare and look nationally and have apples to apples, that would.
That would be good. Because we tend to ask those things when we have our conference calls, so we'll say, well, gee, we're not really thrilled about that. They go, oh, no, that's good. You know, we see a lot of schools, and we don't really see what you get, you know, a lot of positive. Yours is among the most positive we have anywhere. So, I think that'd be helpful for us to try to keep our data in perspective. So we're thinking we're gonna switch, unless you have concerns about not maintaining the same type of things.
I do, a little bit, but before I voice them, I wanna see if the committee has other thoughts.
I like the idea of the comparison, but I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Well, all I was gonna say was, I would like to. Well, all I was going to say was, I would like to see the comparison, but I don't ever want to be in a position where we pat ourselves on the back because we're better than everybody else. And I think there's value to seeing this change over time. So, my gut reaction without having heard this before or thought about it is, you know, could we do this every other year and do that every other year or something like that? So, you could see this data every two years maybe. And I don't think that's necessarily the right answer until you compare what the new survey would look like to this survey. But I guess I would just go on record as saying, I agree with not doing this every year, but I don't know that I'd feel comfortable giving this up to just go to the new survey that just compares us to everybody else. I think we know we're good compared to everybody else.
You know, we feel like we're stagnant now, but you're always getting new blood.
So, it's just a thought.
So, if it was every other year, you'd be getting the new people in.
It's just a thought.
Change. To us, it's the same thing over and over.
We've done that with other types of surveys, like going to every other year. I think that the, what you're giving up is if we're working really hard on something like guidance, we do want the year to next year to see if we're improving. So, you know, you'd wait two years to find out if you're getting better and how people are experiencing the changes.
Well, if your data with the new survey would still show our comparison year to year, then maybe it would be fine.
I just don't know if it could be statistically compared to this. That's what I'm saying. If, now, if it's going to have mostly these same things...
Doesn't have to be compared to this necessarily.
Oh, okay.
But if it still tracks these things, I just think, well...
Perception's important.
That's my thought. But, you know, why don't we see what the new one looks like and go from there.
That's good. We can certainly do an analysis. And if there is a section that you as a committee are very interested in, say guidance, which is a newer thing, that we can say, okay, that whole guidance section is going to go into the other one. So, if there's particular parts of this that you don't want to lose, let us know.
Other thoughts on that point? Okay.
I agree, don't just put this aside until we see what the other has done for us.
Well, we're going to do something. I mean, we've gotten a lot of value out of this. So, you know, we're not abandoning the whole idea. But when you look at our participation rate this year, it's pretty low on parents and staff.
Yeah, but that could be for a lot of reasons, Debbie. That could be that people are happy with the way things are going, so they're not chiming in. That could be...
True.
Look at all the zeros. I mean, you know, this...
It could be a lot of things.
And I understand the point about survey fatigue, but if we're going to survey them with some other survey, it's still going to be survey fatigue. I just, I'm not ready personally, I wouldn't be ready to give up on this altogether. But I might see the new one and say, okay, that, for me, represents enough of a continuation. But I just, I'm not ready to say personally that I would just go there. Because I think, I think you have a lot of really good data here.
Could we see this, the questions that would be asked in the other survey?
No, or we could just do an analysis for you.
Yep.
It is interesting with the every other year thing, because when you look at the participation, it does seem to sort of ebb and flow, that you have a big year and then you have a small year. And it's sort of like, oh, I did that last year, so I'm not going to do it this year. I'll do it next year. I don't know. I don't know what people are thinking, but it does. It goes up and down from year to year. I mean, there were only, only 269 parents took the survey this year, but 674 took it last year. You know, it just kind of goes like that.
We see by the reminders that are sent out strategically. And then, as soon as the reminder goes out, you see the spike of the number of participants on that next day and then a couple of days go and it starts to wane. And then, you know, you put the reminder out, the survey's going to close at a certain date, and then you start to see the participation there. But you can only send out so many reminders.
You've got to cut it off at some point.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. So, we'll see. Either way, we'll definitely be still collecting this type of data.
Okay.
And if most of these things are included in the survey and there's a few things we still like, then maybe we'll get the best of both worlds.
So, I think what I'd like to request is, based on the discussion then, is that the committee have a chance to see the new survey before we decide, okay, let's just shelf the traditional culture and climate.
Sure.
Because it sounds like this is meaningful enough to all of us that we'd just like to continue that discussion a little further.
Sounds good.
Any other comments about the survey from anyone? I know there was a lot of material to go through. Janet and I should have allotted more time to this topic next year. I only had one other area and it's, I don't want to go into it now, but I'd like to maybe suggest we bring it up on a future agenda.
Okay.
To me, this is outstanding results and very reaffirming as we talked about. But in the spirit of never resting on our laurels, the one area to me that kind of stuck out as you went through it was the alcohol and drug use. And while the year-to-year change were in the pluses, the, you know, meaning it was a better improvement year to year...
Just tell me what slide you're on, it's so many slides.
Twenty-eight. Twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Okay.
I just, I just think those numbers, and numbers are numbers, right? You can only put so much stock in them. But they stick out to me just statistically as being some of the lower numbers across the survey.
Yeah, that's true.
And I don't know that our schools can necessarily do a whole lot more. Certainly, we have a lot of programs in this space. But in the spirit of continuous improvement, I would just offer an observation that, to me, that's a little bit concerning. And maybe we should talk about that again on a future agenda.
So, I think this is a question that should be parsed out. That was my reaction to it. Because if, when you say, the sort of, the way it's worded is alcohol and or drug use is not a problem at this school. So, if you just take that simple statement, sometimes you don't know how to answer these things. Because what does "at this school" mean? It's not that you don't understand the rest of the sentence. But we have very few infractions of drug and alcohol use, or never, drug and alcohol use, at the school. We have very few throughout the year. Our kids are generally respectful, they don't, they don't tend to have it in school. There are very few infractions or disciplinary things that result of kids with drugs and alcohol. Very few. But when you say "at this school," I think sometimes as a parent, you think about "in these kids." So, how are you really interpreting this question? Because we all know that alcohol and drugs are a problem in the teenage world, in any community. We do know that. We're not denying that, that's not a problem. But "at this school," did some people think physically at that school or in general, is it a problem? So, I really think that this is a question that one descriptor is not enough to say, you know, alcohol and the drugs, my perception is, to what extent are they present in the school, is different from, do I think this is a problem right now in society?
In our students.
And in teenagers in Foxborough today. And I think those are very different things. And I think this is too big of an issue and too important of an issue to just put down one line that could be interpreted five or six different ways and then we're all answering it with one, you know, I'm just, all I get to put is whether I agree, whether I strongly agree, whether I disagree or strongly disagree. I don't know what I'm thinking when I choose that.
I think that's a potential valid reason.
We've got to do better with...
But I, but I, but I would think that we ought to explore this a little bit more anyway. And we may conclude that that's the answer, but maybe it's time for a school resource officer update or a programs update. And I'll leave that up, that's why I say I want to table this for further thought. I mean, I don't have a crystallized thought on this.
That's fine. We just met with the school resource officer this morning. We have, he will tell you. I mean, I don't know if you need to have him on camera, I'm telling you, because I'm aware of every incident. There's so few. But that doesn't mean it's not a problem. It's just not a problem physically in this school, but it could be a problem for our kids when they're not on, in the school.
And I understand that. And that, again, could be a very valid point. I think the numbers merit further discussion.
Yep.
That's my opinion. I don't know how the rest of the committee feels.
I had circled all those numbers and, you know, had notes next to this area as well. So, I think I would second that. Our students, our high school students, they do another, a separate survey just on substances.
Every two years.
Every two years. So, I mean, perhaps that's the data that you want to look at, Bruce, to continue this discussion.
That would be actually, let's look at that first.
And we've done that through the strategic planning with all of the data that we've looked at, that youth risk survey that gets into cigarette use and all of those kinds of things.
And I, I think that's a good idea. And Debbie, I agree, this is a stage of life kind of a thing for many. But if you go through that data, those numbers stick out to me. That's all I'm saying.
No, no, they do.
So, can we be better? I don't know. But maybe it merits a little further discussion. Okay. Anybody else have any observations? I know we took a lot of time on that, but I thought it was important. All right, thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, Erin, three-year technology plan status update. Sorry to keep you waiting.
plan to end it a year early. And so, the work that's been done so far is what we wanted to update you on. And that started really over the summer with our administrative retreat and looking at what all had been accomplished and where do we need to go next. So, what we wanted to talk to you about tonight is what's happened so far, where we are in the process and our timeline is going forward. So, we just had a couple of slides here, like, I don't know, I think five or six or so, to kind of give you the background, because it has changed a lot when we look at what the Department of Ed requires over time, where we had a five-year plan, recommended to move to a three-year plan and the process of what's taken place so far. So, this summer, when we had all of our administrators, department heads, team chairs, curriculum directors, there were 28 of us that started looking at what had been accomplished so far and where do we need to go. And we, we really talked about what should the major themes be of the next technology plan? What are our greatest challenges as we're moving forward in the area of technology and curriculum instruction? And then, what do we envision teaching and learning to look like as we move forward in the next three to five years and meeting our students' needs that are before us? So, those were some of the things that we tackled this summer at the administrative retreat to be able to come up with themes for the technology plan and what that would look like. We then went to the Technology Steering Committee, and I'll just go quickly here. So, the Technology Steering Committee, this is just a listing of all of the people that are here. We meet monthly. And then, in addition to our monthly meetings where we're together face to face, we have teams where we collaborate online. But what you see there is administrators from every level, meaning principals, myself and Erin co-chair that team. And then, we have the three technology integration specialists and we have grade-level teachers from each of the elementary, middle, and high school, from first grade all the way up through department heads and our library media specialist. So, they're actively working on this plan and all of the instructional technology initiatives that have taken place and the things that you've seen like parent technology and so forth. But we did the same with them, taking that information from the administrative retreat. What do those themes, what should they look like in a new technology plan? And we've developed five themes that we're going to share with you this evening based on that work. But at the same time, the other work that's taking place is looking at what has changed with the Department of Ed when it comes to the technology plan requirements. Erin's going to talk about that. We're looking at current research. And then, we're also looking at our internal data, such as usage, our inventory, help desk, responses, what do we have for software utilization, what's being used. You heard and saw about illuminate, looking at our data analytics platform, all of those kinds of things and how that plays into it. But times have changed over the last number of years when we look at the technology plan as it has been in the past. And Erin's going to speak to that a little bit.
Sure. So, as most of you know, most every student today has a cell phone. And I went to a seminar a couple of years ago in which the speaker said that the cell phone in which our students have in their pocket is likely the worst cell phone they will ever have again. And that, that just speaks to how quickly technology is changing. And with that, there's been a considerable, some considerable changes around the technology plan and the technology planning process in which we use. As Amy said, we're going from a five-year technology plan to a three-year technology plan. And this is largely because the life cycle of technology has changed so much. Also, just changes in the nomenclature and terminology we're using. So, we're no longer planning for technology as a separate item. As we know, technology is embedded in everything that students do on a daily basis, whether that's at home and also in school. So, we're working with digital natives and technology is no longer separate. So, therefore, it's being planned for throughout the different educational planning we do, whether that's curriculum, whether that's professional development. It's no longer just a separate item. Okay? What we say we're doing in terms of technology planning now is really part of the Department of, federal Department of Education's program is we're future-readying our schools. Okay? So, no longer focusing necessarily on hardware with short life cycles, but developing transferable skills for students that relate to technology. So, these things largely focus around curriculum and instruction and assessment, the use of space and time. We talk about the concepts of anytime learning, anywhere and anytime, having a robust infrastructure. So, not just the actual internet connectivity or switches or routers or computers, devices necessarily, but the resources to use those devices instructionally and to get support. Right? So, we talked about the instructional technology support and that staff feel supported in the classroom using technology and students feel that they have accessible and reliable technology at their, at their ready. Data privacy, so this is a hot topic. Every time we turn on the TV every night, we're hearing about a security breach, we're hearing about data privacy, we're hearing about social media and the availability of information that in the past just was not available. There really wasn't a concern about data theft in the, in the past. If somebody wanted to steal data from your bank, they'd have to pull up a U-Haul truck and walk out with a bunch of file cabinets. And that data would be difficult to disseminate. But, but now, we have data at our disposal in terms of access to the internet or the network, not just on computers, but on mobile devices and anywhere and any place. So, with that, using that availability to data to our advantage, but also understanding what both the threats and opportunities it brings, we're using that data to make informed educational decisions. In terms of policy and planning, some, some updates again, just that are more in line with our instructional programs. I know we just went through a fairly comprehensive review of our technology policies. There is a shift again that's coming. It won't require a lot of work on our part. One of the things I will say is that we tend to be at the forefront of this and quite ahead, even looking back at our past technology plan, looking at our implementation methodology in terms of our vision, our planning, the way we implement, assess, and then evaluate, continually, again, in line with, with current and future recommendations or newly released recommendations. So, but that shift is, is going from almost purely the name in case of our policy, not the case for everybody, but from the acceptable use policy to the responsible use policy. So, technology's, again, no longer an add-on. It's something that, it's embedded in everything we do. And part of this is, is just reflective of our program. So, it's, it's not extra. And we're challenged by this, so providing students with access to content and also keeping students safe online. Okay? And largely, this is, again, a shift in name and a shift from the what you can't do to what you should be doing with technology. Okay?
So, as we've been looking at our technology plan and going forward and thinking about those themes, what, we went back to the strategic plan. It's a new strategic plan. When you look at the strategic plan, there are so many areas where technology, where we're saying it's not separate and it falls under a number of those objectives. So, one of the things that we did was we connected, so let's go. So, the identified themes that we came up with is feeling as though that we would capture where it came to data privacy and came to teaching and learning and all of those things that. The first theme, purposeful technology integration and literacy, being technologically literate, being able to read something, understand fake news, understand how to be able to be a consumer and analyze what you're reading and to know... a consumer and analyze what you're reading and to know how to go about that. So that's, it's very different, reading online and where it will take you and your journey as a reader when you start to read and research from one student in a classroom to another. Their pathway is going to be very different depending on which way they go. And to be able to think critically, to be able to analyze that information, and to be digitally literate. And then at the same time, technology integration to where it's not that add-on. It's something that's going to lift learning and take it to the next level, and that it's very purposeful. It's not a bell and whistle to have. It has a specific purpose that goes back to the standards. We have the technology standards as well as our curriculum content standards and how those weave together. The second is technology professional development. We can have the tools that are there, but if we're not working collaboratively together and how do we deepen content and deepen learning with students and how we're using that technology to really lift learning to the next level and support our teachers, then it's all for not. We need to be able to make sure that the technology integration specialists that are working with teachers to help students, whether it's through Office 365 productivity tools, that they're able to use those in their classrooms and that it's across all of our classrooms and not just in pockets. And what does that look like from a support standpoint? The global information and communication, talking about being global citizens and having communication in many different ways. That's a very broad topic, but what that's going to look like within specific goals and action steps? You'll see some of that even, again, going back to the strategic plan. The accessibility of technology that is relevant, that also gets into assistive technology when we think of all of the different assistive technology for our students, when it's text-to-speech, when we think about even keyboarding, when we're talking about that at third and fourth grade level. So there's a lot there that goes back to what is relevant and what's accessible to students, and then the safety, security, and data retention and what that looks like. So these are the five broad themes, and that we're identifying goals and action steps to go under those. But we thought that as we were really going through all of this, it was important to show that connection to the strategic plan too. So if you look at the purposeful technology integration and literacy, if you go to our strategic plan, objective one, which is to develop responsible global citizens by providing dynamic learning experiences within a rigorous curriculum that fosters high level of achievement for all students, two of the strategies that connected right there are continuing to support effective blended learning opportunities at all levels, embedding the technology standards within our content curriculum. So that falls right in line with when we're developing curriculum and what's being taught in classrooms, that it's integrated. We've talked about the SAMR model here where it's not just a matter of substitution, taking where we had a whiteboard in the past or, I mean, chart paper and just taking it to a Word document. That's substituting. But what are ways to really lift that? So there's a connection there as far as the integration within the curriculum, what we're doing.
Connecting back to future-readying our schools, really taking advantage of space and time. So again, the blended learning, anytime learning, leveraging different modalities in terms of student learning with space and in time.
The second theme, looking at technology professional development, we had a number of strategies under that same objective, that you'll see them cross over within these themes, whether it comes to embedding the technology standards and then the blended learning opportunities. But at the same time, really looking at our classrooms and our department's support to increase faculty's collective capacity to use the data to improve curriculum instruction so that feedback is there. So it's just-in-time data that we can use to really meet the students' needs that are in front of us. The third theme, looking at the global information and communication, when we look at strategic, the objective two under the strategic plan, talking about strengthening our school culture and ensuring that students, staff, parents, and all stakeholders feel valued, safe, and have a voice. We've talked here about, again, those soft skills. It's not just the technology, but it's still about the social skills. We may be collaborating and communicating online, but still, there's that piece to make sure that those soft skills are developed. Looking under objective four, that maintaining strong support for the education here, again, it connects back to social media and the budgetary decisions that we make going forward, website platforms, what does that communication look like? The accessibility goes, again, back to what we had talked about with that first objective in looking at having it real-time, it's accessible, it's relevant, it's going to be able to make a difference immediately in how we're using the information that we're able to gain. And that fifth theme there, as Erin was talking a little bit before, the data retention, the security and privacy here and making sure that the safety mechanisms are there and that we're able to secure those measures and to maintain the privacy, and then at the same time, digital citizenship and all of those kinds of things that go into keeping our students safe.
And again, just tying back into data, making data-driven decisions and having data-aware and informed staff.
So we're in the process of developing goals under these five themes, what that looks like and action steps, but again, showing where it does tie back to the strategic plan because it's not separate. They do have so many connections that are there. The Department of Ed used to require the separate technology plan, unlike where we are today. So what we found is that it weaves so much within what we're trying to do strategically. And when we look at our overall goals of the district, that this plan really is going to mirror in many ways the strategic plan, but then at the same time, we have some very specific goals that we are pursuing with action steps that go along with those particular themes. We're going to be developing focus group questions to be able to get student focus groups and parent focus groups and staff focus groups this fall, to be able to have more voice that's there as we continue to develop this plan. But at the same time, we do anticipate for the future, when we look at the strategic plan being a three-year plan, that at our next strategic planning process, these may be really one plan together instead of two separate. That's kind of where we're seeing our work going.
So you're anticipating the plan your team is developing now will be a two- to two-and-a-half-year plan, basically, to take care of the last things that you want to take care of, technology-specific, and then meld the two together?
Yes.
Correct. And then what you'll likely see in conjunction with the strategic plan will likely be a technology capital plan that will address some of the more, you know, some of the other issues in terms of the budgeting, the community partnerships, and the data privacy.
Sounds good. I like that idea.
Me too.
And this is another case in terms of validation, in terms of what we're doing. We start with, you know, curriculum, instruction, and assessment, obviously being aware of the strategic plan, but going through two different strategic planning processes and come up with a lot of synergy and overlap between the two plans. It's, again, it's a case where it's validating that we are doing the right things.
Is that the presentation?
That's it.
I like it. I mean, I like the themes. I like the connectivity back to our strategic plan.
It really does. It definitely merits. Yeah. So the next step really is maybe sometime in January, as soon as it's ready, the new plan will be presented to you for approval for the next, I'm going to say, two to two-and-a-half years, but that would be the outset.
That's great. Any other comments or questions, suggestions?
Very well.
I like the vision.
Yeah.
I like how the goals are condensed and attainable.
I like it.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Great job.
Every time we talk about technology at this table, at this point, I look back on where we were when I started on this committee almost six years ago and where we are now, and it is just awesome.
Me too.
I agree.
My first year, wow. I think it was a little overwhelming, how much progress we had to make.
The first Strategic Planning Board I was on, we were just tiptoeing into that technology end, and like this time, it was all focused on technology.
What a great example of teamwork, though.
Yep, absolutely.
Getting to where we need to be, and I include that as in the bigger team, all of us.
The town's support for it.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the big team, the village, as it were.
The whole village.
That was great.
I like their title slide, "On Top of a Puzzle," and the red teamwork across it.
It takes a team. Like the graphic of the connect.
Yeah.
So we have on the agenda the third reading of our policy regarding naming facilities. I'm going to offer the committee a thought for your decision. We could postpone that topic for the next meeting if you would prefer to move on because we do have an executive session tonight and I want to make sure we're sharp for that. I'm happy to go through it tonight, but if you'd rather, I don't think we have anything pressing on naming facilities. So I just offer that as a thought.
No, but the other thing is, it's in its completed form here, having been vetted several times now. So...
So do you think it would be a quick topic? Is that your thought, Bevy?
Well, I certainly was hoping so because it's very clear now exactly how the final version will be.
Okay, so would everybody like to keep going or it's up to you all?
I'm fine with moving forward. And do we need to reread the entire policy or can we waive the re-reading on this?
Well, my thought, because we've interjected an old policy into this new one, it probably is worth the two minutes to read it.
Yeah, probably.
So do we have a volunteer?
Well, okay, naming facilities, it's going to be listed as file FF. Naming of a school facility is an important matter that deserves thoughtful attention. Personal prejudice or favoritism, political pressure, or temporary popularity should not be an influence in choosing a name for a school, a portion of a school, or a portion of school grounds. Whenever possible, the wishes of the community, including parents and students, should be considered in naming school facilities. It is not the practice of the Foxborough Public Schools to name parts of buildings or facilities after individuals. However, the school committee may consider such a request using the following standards and guidelines. To be considered, an individual must be known and recognized by their peers, administrators, and the Foxborough community as an extraordinary educator slash community leader, as demonstrated by their exceptional teaching, educational innovation, and/or leadership which uniquely impacted student achievement and the Foxborough School District. This is an individual who would be recognized as remarkable and for consistently going far beyond the ordinary in their dedication and service to the Foxborough schools. The school committee has the authority to approve the naming and renaming of buildings, structures, and facilities located on school property. The school committee also has the authority to name subsections of existing structures or facilities, such as classrooms, auditoriums, and gymnasiums. Names and/or wording associated with school facilities shall be consistent with school district policies and promote messages aligned with the mission, vision, and goals of the school district. To the extent possible, names and/or wording should be designed not to restrict the use of a space or inhibit changing the function of the space should that become necessary in the future. When the opportunity to name or dedicate a new school or school-related property, structure, or facility is forthcoming, an orderly procedure will be communicated at the next available school committee meeting. The committee's agendas should clearly reflect the intent to consider review and vote on naming opportunities. Submission of a name for a school space may be made by any resident or by the superintendent in writing and should be made to the school committee chairperson. If a name is being initiated at the local school level, the principal must take responsible, reasonable steps to include the school committee and PTA, PTO in the nomination of the name submission, before submission to the school committee. The written request should specify the intent of the requister and the reasons why this particular name would fit the facility. It should offer appropriate background information on the person or organization after which the facility will be named. An offer of a financial contribution to the school district may accompany the naming request, but the school committee is not obligated to accept or reject a name based upon financial considerations alone. Philanthropic contributions in support of the school district are encouraged by the school committee. The school committee may acknowledge generous donors by designating appropriate spaces within the school district's facilities, consistent with a level of financial commitment. Following the submission of a naming request, the school committee chairperson will specify consideration period that allows for public comment, following which the school committee would deliberate and vote on the name. The school committee vote must be unanimous.
Thanks, Bevy. So just in case anyone's watching at home, this is our third reading. And at the last meeting, at the last reading, we just requested, as Bevy and Tina mentioned, to incorporate some language from our last policy into this policy, which has come to us from the state, from the Mass Association of School Committees. I think the, I find, I don't know if you all have the same reaction, I find some of the funding and philanthropy accompaniments to such a request to be interesting, but to me, it must be indicative of other issues or topics that have come up in requests to name facilities in other parts of the state. But be that as it may, this is a recommendation from the state with our, some of our wording added in. So any comments before we motion? Everyone comfortable at this point? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes for our file FF, naming facilities.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you to the policy subcommittee for their work on that. Good work getting to a reading that I think we all liked.
Totally agree.
Other matters? And Bevy, you were right, that was quick. Thank you. Other matters?
I'll keep it short.
Go ahead.
Fall sports season is upon us. Nice to see the kids out there. Concert season is upon us already. Nice to see that. And great for, we have a couple of new music staff and they are right in the, right in the role with Foxborough, so I just want to really compliment them, especially our new band director who took over, and halftime show has been wonderful, and it's nice to see that going seamlessly as well. And then PD is this Friday, professional development for our staff. So we'll give Amy and her team, her professional development team, many teams she has, a lot of credit, and you can see the choice, it's in your packet of information. So teachers have a lot of choice, so it's response to what they think they need that fits within the district framework. And I think we have a lot of really interesting, exciting options. So I thought, I'm sure you enjoyed reading it too, see what the teachers were doing. But it's going to be another great day.
No school Friday.
No school for students on Friday.
Or Monday.
Or Monday.
Faculty and staff. Well, that's right.
Holiday Monday.
You still have school.
That's right.
Students get the four-day weekend.
That's great. That's great. Great program. Looking forward to visiting sessions.
Anything else?
No, I'm going to put there, due to the hour.
Tina?
I'll keep it short too, just two things. We had the open house at the high school this past Thursday, the 28th, and it was very good. I always find it very informative. I know our kids are getting older, but I find it interesting to go and meet the teachers and hear what they are doing in the classroom because we don't always get so much information from our kids. I had a great time. I saw a ton of parents there. They appeared to be having a good time too. So I'm really glad that we've reinstituted the open house over the last, I think, four or five years here at the high school. So I think that's good. And the other thing I had for other matters is I went last Wednesday to the town Safe Task Force meeting. Marilyn had asked if I could attend. She and I are kind of tag-teaming on the task force for addressing substance abuse issues in town. And Sylvia was there. issues in town, and Sylvia was there also from the school administration, and there were members of the SAFE Coalition there. SAFE, it's an organization that, of volunteers that represents a number of towns.
Out of Franklin.
It's Franklin, Medway, they're out of Franklin, but they represent Franklin, Medway, Millis, Norfolk, Brentham, Plainville, Walpole, and Foxborough, and they do have funds that are dedicated to helping our town and our area. They gave us this, so this one's for the central office, so you can have that. Beth took one for the guidance office, and I actually have one for our school committee use if we need to investigate resources. So I think the general consensus from the committee meeting last Wednesday was to try to partner with this group of volunteers to get more information up on our town website and have some podcasts available, and they also have some speakers that might be available to come and talk to our students, too. So I know Beth was going to talk to Diana.
I think it's great that Foxborough can benefit from, if you would consider a wider effort, because they've already done a lot of the work, so we don't have to...
It's very established.
It is already established, and I think putting it on the town website is really important because, you know, this is a community problem.
It's a town-wide.
It's a community, it's a national problem.
Right.
But we do want everybody to be, hopefully, you know, alert and involved. It's more important to be involved.
Well, we'll keep you posted. Marilyn and I are going to cover all the bases with that.
And usually Beth or I are at that coalition meeting as well, and we make sure one of us is here. So thank you for going.
You are welcome. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Tina. Bevy? I'm all set. Amy? All set. Do you want to just comment for a minute on what we're going to be doing for professional development on Friday? I know it's a series of choices, but...
Sure. Be happy to.
So we've talked about coming out of the social-emotional program review. We also had our English-language arts curriculum review just last year, and then our ongoing initiatives with Office 365 and OneNote and Teams and the collaborative tools that are there. So teachers have the choice of an afternoon session and a morning session based on those different initiatives, and we've also differentiated those by user level. So for example, if they are going to a session that has to do with Office 365 and Teams and OneNote, those that are heavy users are more of an expert group, and those that are not as heavily using yet, they're still learning from their colleagues, are going into more of a novice, beginner level. And those are also taught by Alyssa Marcharnick and Karen Borges as an example. So there's your early adopters that are really using it. They have the street cred, if you will, from their colleagues, because they are using it every day with students. So they know the...
The nuances.
The pitfalls, too, about how to make it work and really learn from their experience. And then also in the area of social-emotional learning, looking at executive function, working with students with autism, looking at how to just support, we talked about tonight, that skill deficit and collaborative problem-solving approach. So there's a lot of social-emotional learning, including our educational assistants, teachers, and then English-language learners. So there were licensure changes for teachers. Every teacher now, as of July 1, 2016, now has to have 15 hours within English-language learning or sheltered English immersion, providing those opportunities for teachers for ELL. And that's been outside of just the professional development days as an example. That's a 15-hour course where they had five hours on one day in August. They're doing five hours of online with the instructor and then five hours on our October Day. So really finding ways to expand outside of our own professional development days, excuse me, but it's really based on what are the needs of our current initiatives and being able to differentiate that by teacher level and by grade span level, what it looks like at elementary, middle, or high, or even preschool with social-emotional learning and really bringing in some expertise to help our educators grow.
That's great. Nice.
Wish you could just say that with some more enthusiasm.
Pretty excited.
Well, the feedback we get from teachers, because they do feel that their voices are heard, and when they came out of in August in mindfulness and really getting to root causes and how to best meet our students' needs, they just are, they're energized, and it's so exciting to see them and to come out and to say, "That was awesome."
That's great. Thank you. Chris?
I'll be quick. Next Wednesday, the 11th, I'm going to meet and attend a forum with Acting Commissioner of DESI, Jeff Wolfson, on K through 12 teaching, teaching and learning.
Great.
We can report back at the next school committee meeting what you've learned.
He's very, he's very open to discussion. He's very accessible, we find.
Great.
He is.
Are you doing that as part of Brockton, part of your, or are you doing that on behalf of us?
Bridgewater sent me an email asking if I wanted to attend.
Great. Interesting to hear about. Thank you. Anything else, Chris?
No, that's it.
Marilyn?
We're beginning our assistant superintendent search tomorrow with parents, administrators, and two school committees, Tina and I are going to be at it tomorrow night.
Great. Thank you in advance.
I didn't forget about that. I just knew Marilyn was going to say it.
Yeah, you can't take it all.
You gotta give me something to say, Tina. You gotta give me something.
Looking for, you've got a good group.
Mr. Uckner?
We have to share it well.
Janet?
All set, thank you.
Thank you for all your support, as always. Okay, Beverly, would you like the motion?
I would like to make a motion that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing wage slash contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the incoming superintendent, after which we will not return to open session.
I'll second that motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Have a good evening.
Bye.